Call the meeting order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the March 3rd, 2015 Post Falls City Council Meeting. Clerk will notice that note that all council members are present. Tonight, we do have two public hearings, and if you wish to testify in either, there are documents on the back you can sign and turn into our clerk. We'll start those in just a moment. And we have kind of gone away from recognizing dignitaries at meetings, but there's one that I feel we must recognize, former Mayor Clay Larkin. Clay, it's great to see you and welcome tonight.
This is the first time that he's been here.
That's about the first time he's been here, and he's always welcome, so. Ceremonies, appointments, oh, I guess I should extend another welcome, and that's to all the scouts who are here. And it's my understanding, at the last count, we have three different troops represented, and they're here to get their citizens badge. So, welcome. Have any questions? Please feel free to ask us afterwards, and if we don't have the answers, we'll get them for you. So, thanks for taking the time to attend. And we also have a student here who's dual enrollment at high school and North Idaho College here, so welcome to you as well, sir. Tree City USA, Post Falls has become synonymous with that, and they have received the 2014 Tree City, we have received the 2014 Tree City USA Award for the 17th consecutive year. The Arbor Day Foundation gives this honor for commitment to effective urban forest management, thanks to our urban forestry team and the Urban Forestry Committee for their efforts. The annual tree giveaway is scheduled for Saturday, April 11th, at the Camellan Park Boat Launch. Area residents are allowed three trees per household. This will be the 11th year for this event, and an estimated 30,000 trees have been given out. There will be more details to follow later, so mark your calendars. And again, that is April 11th. Tomorrow is Idaho Day. March 4th, 2015 marks Idaho's territorial anniversary and the first official year of celebration in honor of Idaho Day. The Idaho Legislature established March 4th as a day to educate and celebrate our history, culture, resources, and the beauty of the great state of Idaho. To see how your neighbors across the state celebrate Idaho, visit the city's Facebook page for links to the Idaho Day Facebook page and website. This Saturday evening, from 7 until 10 o'clock PM, the Post Falls Education Foundation is hosting their 9th Annual Weinstein &amp; Dine at the Greyhound Park and Event Center. Tickets, excuse me, tickets are $45 per person in advance, or $60 at the door, and proceeds go to the Post Falls School District Classroom Projects. Tickets are available at Columbia Bank, the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce, Trading Company, Super One, Ineteca, and the Post Falls School District Administration Office. This is a 21-and-over event. Again this year, the city council, myself, councilors Alan Wolfe, Carrie Thorson, Linda Wilhelm, Skip Hissong, and Betty Ann Henderson, along with Chief Hoag and members of the Police Department, and Chief Warren Meredith, Cootney Counting Fire and Rescue, will be preparing and delivering meals for the Post Falls Senior Center Meals on Wheels program. This is a great event and so important to many of our seniors. If you want to get involved, contact the Post Falls Senior Center at 773-9582. I noticed, Mr. Malloy, that you participated last year. They didn't invite you back?
No, that was dangerous.
And Jobs Plus announced this afternoon, a new president for the organization has been hired. I would like to welcome Jenny Gilliam. I and the city of Post Falls look forward to working with her and continuing our long relationship with Jobs Plus. I had the opportunity with Council President Wilhelm to sit in on the interview process, and I think she's going to be a great addition to the group. The Addams Family. The Christian Youth Theater of North Idaho is presenting The Addams Family, a new musical. Performance is a Friday, March 13th, at 7 o'clock at The Jack in Post Falls, Saturday, the 14th, at 3:00 PM at the Coeur d'Alene Library, Saturday, the 14th, at 7:00 PM at the Golden Spikes Community Center in Rathrum, and Sunday, March 15th, at 3:00 at the Croc Community Rooms in Coeur d'Alene. And I want to thank Sam Coentes for letting me know about this and for tickets to see the show. Sam was last year's mayor's youth award winner, and again, it was great to see a young man like that come forward and extend the invitation, bring the information about the Christian Youth Theater, and tell us of their performance, so I'm sure it'll be a great time. With that, are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict? See, now would you like to present the consent calendar, please?
Item A is minutes from the February 17th, 2015 meeting. Item B is payables, February 10th through February 23rd, 2015. Item C is the 2015 Water Reclamation Facility Upgrades Bid Request. Item D is change City Hall and Water Department's phone and internet service to Level 3. Item E is Tullamore Preliminary PUD Amendment, Street Lighting Findings of Facts and Conclusions. Item F is confirmation of an interfund loan that was for the 911. Item G is lease agreement for two copiers for the police department. Item H is an easement acquisition for JACOS SH41 Bike Pedestrian Trail. Item I is the Off-Site Improvement Waiver Request for 201 East 6th Avenue. And Item J is Crown Point Second Edition Subdivision Plata Application.
Any questions? Did I entertain a motion?
I'd move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Please, I'm sorry, Alan.
I just want to make a note that I would have to abstain from item A since I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Okay, so noted, thank you. Please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolfe?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next up are public hearings. The first is the Idaho Community Development Block Grant for the Post Falls Senior Center. And I'll open the public hearing, and Nancy Mabel will be presenting.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm Nancy Mabel, an independent planning consultant and under contract to write, with the senior center, to write this grant. With me tonight, I also have Allison MacArthur, the executive director for the Post Falls Senior Center, Annalise Miller from Miller Stoffer Architects, and I believe Rob Clark, the president of the Post Falls Senior Center Board. So, this is a requirement, this public hearing is a requirement of the Idaho Community Development Block Grant Program, where we must be discussing the scope of work, budget, schedule, and beneficiaries. It also falls in line with the city's participation plan that requires two public hearings, one before the grant application is submitted, and the second one at mid-construction. There's two parts to the application, as you see in your packet. Part A is all of the state and federal criteria, and it also includes the scope of work, budget, schedule. Part B is all about the senior center. And in the event you don't know where it's located, right here we are in lovely, beautiful Post Falls, Idaho. This is 3rd Avenue, their address is 1215 East 3rd Avenue. Here's the senior center, and there's the thrift store right behind it. Let's get into the scope of work. I'm sorry, you can't see this very well, and that's why I put a circle around it, but you can see a line going up there. The carpet is beginning to tear at the seams, and here's another area where there's some tape overlaying the carpet. The International Building Code states that the carpet shall be securely attached. This is posing a tripping hazard. The photo to the right, the restrooms are not completely accessible. The Idaho Building Code also states that there must be an 18-inch vertical bar adhered to the wall. More accessibility issues at the front entrance. There is no slip-resistant surface. The accessible ramp is actually, I'm sorry I didn't capture it in this picture, off to the right here. So, in inclement weather, people are being dropped off. If they need the ramp, they're going backwards, and then they're coming up here through the rain and the snow and the ice and whatever else. And this is not a slip-resistant surface, so we hope to repair that with the project. This is previously a mechanical room located in the Finley Room area. The first photo on the left is the ceiling where the HVAC equipment was, and you can see, it's not sealed totally properly, you've got a little weatherization issue. You can also see to the right, this is the wall, this is the outside wall that is, the exterior of the building is on the other side. At one point in time, you could actually use these as little peepholes if you wanted to. You could see right through them. However, winter set in, and snow is blowing in, so the senior center put some badges there for it. This needs to be repaired, we need some drywall and to totally repair it. And after the repairs, the seniors will be using this as a storage room. These air conditioning units are located on the north side of the facility. They're old, they're working intermittently, and parts are no longer available, they're beyond their useful life. Same holds true with the fire system suppression main head, this unit right here. I believe it was about a year, maybe two ago, where the senior center, there were some problems with it, and they had to have a firm in Seattle actually make a part for it. So, this also is beyond their useful life and needs to be repaired. Oh, the roof. It's very colorful, as you can see, there's one color here and here, and we've got some patching here. This is not the only location on the facility where we've got the roof tearing, the seams. The problem with this is that the rainwater and snow are getting into the roof, underneath the roof, and the senior center is having to call in contractors, especially for the snow removal, to get that out of there, to deter the development of mold on top of the Exterior paint, I'm just going to say that this kind of speaks for itself. These light packs, there's about six to eight of them around the building, on the exterior of the building. They were installed in the 70s, sometimes they work and sometimes they don't. So, it'd be nice to know that you can flip on a switch and know that your exterior lighting for safety is going to work, so those need to be replaced. This right here is the air compressor unit, or compressor unit, for the refrigerator and freezer units that are inside the building. There's a pinhole leak in it somewhere that is leaking freon. They've had it looked at several times, and no one can seem to find the leak, so that also needs to be replaced. That's all okay, because this whole side of the building, there's going to be an addition here, so all of this stuff needs to come out, and new will go in on the other side of the addition, I believe. What we have here on the left is during a meal inside the facility. What we have on the right is the storage for those meals. We're out of room. It's difficult to store enough products to serve the existing clientele for the daily meals and still have enough items on hand for emergencies, so they need additional dry food storage capacity. So, here's a floor plan, and I'm sorry, this is a little bit hard to see on here. So, we've got the lighter green, that is the existing facility. That mechanical room where they remove the furnace happens to be right here. The previous picture of the dry food storage area happens to be right here. It looks bigger on this plan than it really is, trust me. The additional dry storage capacity would be in addition right here to the east side of the building. North side of the building where the existing air conditioning units and compressor are would have additional space for classrooms. In the front, we would have a covered entry where you could drive under, drop people off, have it fully accessible to the public and to the patrons. Here would be a reception and welcoming area. Right now, all of the brochures and newspaper and day-old bread and stuff is all in this small little space, and it's my understanding they plan to put that in the welcome and reception area. This rendering does not show the backside, the east side, for the expansion of the dry food storage, but right here, you can see is the welcome reception area, covered entryway, and north addition for classrooms. Again, we have a small one, I'm sorry about this, but this is the certified opinion of probable cause by the architect. I want to point out the three items that the senior center would like to use volunteer labor on, and that is painting, insulation, and drywall. But this is the bigger picture, this is the community development block grant budget. We're requesting $150,000 from the block grant program. The seniors are putting in cash of $187,908. The in-kind volunteer labor is $9,300. In the last year, they have expended towards this project $14,771, for a total project cost of $361,979. This is what our schedule looks like, we're hoping the grant award is in April, but it may be May. We would look at bid opening in June, start the construction in July, have that 50% complete in September, which is also the time we'd have that second mid-construction public hearing that I mentioned earlier. We have to meet all of the HUD requirements, so we'll have all of this stuff done by October, have our certificates of potential completion, and close out the project by January. And I think the National Council on Aging says it best, but I can't go without saying a few words also. I did do quite a bit of research on this time, and it's proven that senior centers offering a range of health, education, recreation, volunteer, and other social interaction opportunities, enhance dignity, support, independence, and encourage community involvement. They feel less lonely, laugh more frequently, and have reduced levels of stress, feel more satisfied with life, and have increased or started exercising regularly. The Post Falls Senior Center serves as a quality meeting place where seniors and community groups alike can gather and discuss issues that impact their lives, together with social, recreational, and educational opportunities. Now, the fun part. Meals are served three days a week, about 8,000 meals were served in 2014. You may recognize a few people in here, this is actually the March for Meals, which you actually mentioned at the beginning of the city council meeting. It's an awareness program where local officials, business leaders, and community members participate in the Meals on Wheels program. Currently, 485 meals are delivered to homes each week. There were 13,449 meals delivered in 2014. After your congregant meal, you could join in two days a week after lunch for bingo, and join in on bowling or many other forms of exercise or recreation, such as fit and fall-proof, Tai Chi, cards, trips to the Coeur d'Alene Casino, dances, and many more. The center offers blood pressure checks, flu shots, and hearing checks. There are health fairs, chronic health disease education classes, Medicare and Medicaid counseling, tax assistance, 55 and alive driving classes, and many more. And this was one of the Elder Law meetings. And I've only really shown you just a handful of all of the offerings of the senior center. Well, emergency repairs will be continued, and the senior center will continue to seek grant funding assistance, and if this isn't awarded, they'll probably reapply again, or asked to reapply again. Until the improvements are made, additional planned services and programs cannot be increased. So, our next steps. After the public hearing is closed, these actions must be taken in order to proceed with submission of the grant application. After the application is submitted, the deadline, it must be postmarked by Friday, March 6th. Okay? Staff at the Department of Commerce review it, the Economic Advisory Council will meet in April, and then, once the award comes out of the governor's office, notification will be to the mayor. That's all I have, I'd be happy to facilitate questions.
Can I answer two questions for you? The Community Development Block Grant is being sought by the senior center, but it's being run through the city?
Correct.
Because that is a requirement for the grant, correct?
That is correct. Only cities and counties can apply for the grant, which is why at the last council meeting, there was a sub-reception agreement for you, an agreement between the city and the senior center, who's going to do what.
Yeah, just wanted that for clarification. Second question, it looked like there was two parts, $150,000 grant request and $187,000 of cash being contributed by the senior center.
Correct.
Now, just for curiosity, is that cash in hand, is that fundraisers will accomplish that? My question is this, so if the $150,000 grant is awarded, does the senior center have the capacity at this point to meet their grant?
I'm told they are, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any questions?
That was the question I had.
Thank you, Nancy. So, that would be the proponent, and do we even have a staff report on this?
No.
With that, clerk, do we have anyone wishing to testify? Let's start with in favor speaking, Clay Larkin, and he would like to speak. Do I need to tell you we need your name?
This is different from here than up there. Before I start my timed remarks, I just want to take a moment and pay each of the councilors and Honorable Mayor Jacobson a very heavy applaud for all the work that you do and continue to do. Even though I haven't been here physically, I still have these working okay, and I watch from home, but thank you for everything you do and to keep the city moving ahead. It shows, and it will continue to show. The other lady I want to thank sits over here, Nancy Mabel. During my 18 years with the city, I got to work with her quite a bit, and she is the reason primarily that the city enjoys such a good, positive outcome of community development block grants. She is number one in my mind in writing her down these and getting them done. Now, I'll start my timed comments. Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. My comments, I am in support of you authorizing Mayor Jacobson to sign this document as early as possible. There are many seniors here this evening that I'm sure say, share my same comments. This is a badly needed project. Over the last four or five years, and especially the last year, I spent a lot of time down at the senior center. They are incredibly busy, to put it mildly. What you saw tonight was just a tip of the iceberg for the things that they do. They host a lot of events, funerals, receptions, weddings. They're even doing a prom here this spring. Unfortunately, it's not a town prom, but they chose to come here. What you will be doing is ensuring the ongoing wealth and well-being of the senior center for many years to come. I know Betty Ann and Frank has been there for lunch several times, several of you helped last year on the Meals for Wheels. But really, it's all about helping each other. The city has always tried to be a good partner with the Department of Commerce in being frugal on the community development block grants, so that also is very important. And I would say it would mean a lot to all the seniors that are here, and those that couldn't be here tonight, if you authorized Mayor Jacobson to sign this document. I've only used up two minutes, and I'm going to quit. Thank you all.
Thank you, Clay. In favor not wishing to speak, Ann Byers, General Manager of Garden Plaza. In favor not wishing to speak, Rob Clark. In favor not wishing to speak, Donna Wilder, Post Falls Senior Center Board Member. In favor not wishing to speak, Pat Smith, in support of the senior center, it says. Jim Smith, also not wishing to speak and in favor, also in support of the senior center. Donald Bell, in favor, not wishing to speak. Frances Bell, in favor. John Larson, in favor. Millie Larson, in favor. John Brockman, support the building block grant for Post Falls Senior Center. Marilyn Riggs is in favor. Allison MacArthur is in favor of the senior center block grant, and Joan Kursbaum in favor. So, those who wish to be, have their support documented? Are there any opposed?
No.
I don't imagine we need rebuttal. I'm going to give you a chance, but that would be you, Nancy.
No.
With that, I'll close the public hearing, thank you all. How would council like to act?
I'd like to make a motion, unless somebody has something else to say.
Go for it.
It's all yours.
I would move to approve the authorization for Mayor Jacobson to sign the certificates page, and also move for the authorization to proceed with the submission of the Idaho Community Development Block Grant application.
Second. Motion in many seconds. Further discussion? Please take the roll.
Larson?
Aye.
Wolfe?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Nancy, thank you for the work you've done and for all those who were here. Next item up is Budget Amendment Number Two, and I would assume that Jason will be presenting. Open the public hearing.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second budget amendment for fiscal year 2015, and there's only one item I want to discuss. At a prior council meeting, there was an authorization of an ordinance that allowed the Building Division to take in-house the plumbing and electrical inspections. Currently, as a little background, the state of Idaho provides this service, and the city of Post Falls would like to be able to offer that service in-house as a one-stop-shop type of plan where you can see the process all the way through. And so, the ordinance was passed and approved that allowed the city to do so. The second step of this process is the, there's requirements that in order to do plumbing and electrical inspections, you need to have the right certifications to do so, the journeyman level. Currently, staff doesn't have that ability to do those inspections, and so, the discussion was if we do the inspections in-house, we would need two additional staff. But along with that, when we do the inspections, we, the city, will get revenue generated from both plumbing and the electrical inspections. What I had done was I had taken the last five years of revenue that the state gives the city, and the city receives 10% of whatever the state bills for, so they do the inspections. It happened in the city of Post Falls, the city gets 10% of both plumbing and electrical. So, over the past five years, for plumbing inspections, the city received $50,000. For electrical inspections, the city received $70,000, which together pulls $120,000 in revenue that was projected to be coming to the city if we hired two positions and take those responsibilities on in-house. With the two positions, they total up exactly about the same amount of $120,000, so each building inspector position is roughly about $60,000 per year. If you look above, you'll see that the plumbing is just a little shy of the $60,000, the cost, but if we hire both inspectors in-house, we'd have enough to cover the two additional staff. But I do want to note that we are looking, if the budget amendment is approved, to have one, we're going to look for an inspector that has both plumbing and the electrical, because that way they have both certifications, and we wouldn't need to fill the other position. Actually, the city of Post Falls would come out ahead in that scenario. And since this is the only item on there, the next step is there's a budget amendment later on in the agenda. Yes?
How much additional support staff is going to be required?
It's the Building Division's intent to use existing staff. It's the building division's intent to use existing staff to use the front desk, and also, these positions, they will also be filling in additional duties for, the inspectors can rotate. The intent is to use these positions not only for plumbing and electrical, but also to fill in for a building inspector as well. Currently, we only have one building inspector, and when he's on vacation, certain projects have to wait. Yes?
And can one person handle that workload?
It's, the intent is to, just to see at first if we have one person, to start with one, and then to see if we need to hire the additional. It's my understanding that it's not, it's not very common for one person to have both certifications. It does happen, I'm sure they're out there, since they both require journeyman level, which is years of service of doing both plumbing and electrical inspections. We'd like to start with plumbing, see what, see if there's enough workload for that, and then assess as we need.
Carrie?
Yes, Joe? Oh, sorry.
My question, you've got it factored in, $60,000 for each position?
Yes.
Basically, for $120,000, for two positions?
For two.
So if you found the person, the person that had both of those qualifications?
Yes.
Is that a $120,000 job?
Yeah.
No.
Jumped right in there.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
Oh, go ahead. Chelsea, did you have?
We discussed this this morning where just, Jason wasn't present, but we would, if we were to hire one person, then we would need an administrative person at a lesser wage in order to handle all the paperwork, because that individual then would be going out and doing all the inspections for plumbing and all the inspections for electrical. So they would be out in the morning doing one and in the afternoon doing the other. If we have two positions, then they would be able to handle the paperwork themselves.
Yeah, I just thought that there'd probably be a higher premium placed on an individual that had both of those qualifications, so.
Okay. Joe?
What's the growing rate generally in the area for plumbing and electrical inspectors?
We would classify it as a, there'd be two additional building inspectors, and the hiring rate would be $20 an hour.
And that's typical for county, city?
Yeah, we had done a, Teresa and Human Resources had done an assessment of what these positions would be, and it came back to be a building inspector classification at the starting $10 an hour. Yeah.
There will also be most likely an inter-local agreement with Cord Lane to back each other up on the plumbing to start, and then the electrical, they hope to also have an electrical inspector in-house at some point.
It also contemplated working with other cities as well, had you not Rathrum?
We'll talk to them, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. You are representing the city as proponent, so I'm sure that's probably staff report as well?
Staff report as well, yes.
Shannon, is there anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
Thank you. Jason, you want to rebut anything you said?
No.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. That'll close the public hearing. Counsel, how do you want, wish to act?
There's an ordinance at the end of the, at the end of the meeting, so.
Defer to the ordinance. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, and we show none. Next up is citizens' issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address a council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda, and if anyone wishes to speak, come forward, give your name, and we'll give you time to talk.
Dan Ryan, Cootney County Fire and Rescue. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of the Fire District, even though Chief Hoag's not here tonight to put the spotlight on him, but he attended and was our keynote speaker at our awards banquet last weekend, and we just wanted to publicly thank him for that participation.
Good, thank you.
Did he do a good job?
He did an outstanding job.
I'm sure he did.
Thanks, Chief. Anyone else? Seen none. Next item up is new business, and we have none. Ordinances and resolution, ordinance dealing with the Budget Amendment Number Two, fiscal year 2015.
Move to place the ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Two, fiscal year 2015, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, amending the annual appropriation ordinance 1274 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2014, to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenues and to authorize expenditure of previously unbudgeted fund balance, increasing and establishing the appropriations for expenditures in various departments and funds, providing that the tax levy upon taxable property within the city is not affected hereby, and adopting the applicable kinds and levels, providing that all ordinances in conflict herewith are superseded by this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, and providing that the ordinance shall be effective upon its publication.
Move to approve the ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Two, fiscal year 2015, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item up is administrative staff reports.
I just wanted to mention tonight, because I had a question just prior to the meeting, on what legislation the mayor and I might be speaking to as far as opposing at the state level, and the particular items that we're looking at is House Bill 18, Urban Renewal Exercise of Eminent Domain, and we're opposing that, they're trying to eradicate that authority from the urban renewal. House Bill 19, which would require the urban renewal to have a debt approved by city council before they could engage in any kind of debt. So for example, the urban renewal just went out and incurred debt on the Greens Ferry overpass. It did not require us to approve that at a council level. This bill would require that to come to council, prayer to the debt. The other, one of the others was House Bill 127, Annexation Procedures, that would update the annexation procedures and make it much more difficult for the cities to do annexations. And I believe, Ron, didn't you copy individuals on that bill, House Bill 127, last Friday? Also, the four mayors also opposed that and signed a letter today and sent it down. That's being heard at the House tomorrow. At 9:30 or 10:30, I'm not sure.
I think it's 9:30.
9:30, okay. And then, at last, was House Bill 173, which would take the new construction value that the city receives currently in taxes and provide that to the schools to pay off bonds. And so, it would actually take not only from the city, but the other taxing districts, so we would lose that taxing revenue, and so we've sent down opposition to that. Can I take any questions about those?
Yeah. That last one, I'm in the dark on that.
So the city-
What is the rationale for taking city funds? We've always kept school districts and cities so separate.
I'm not sure the rationale. It was Mike Moyle introduced that, and it was his belief that the city did not budget for those funds and that they would not miss them if they did not receive them, and that's, when you read through his proposal, it actually states that it's bonus money to the cities, is how he refers to it. It's very inaccurate, and the city does budget for those dollars and we use those dollars. And the same as any other taxing district also is allowed to use those dollars.
Over the past few years, as they've cut the funding for education, they're trying to figure out ways to get money back to it.
Well, I know they've attempted to-
This was a way.
I think he was just given inaccurate information, and he moved forward with it, even though it's not accurate, and I believe IACU was supporting that one also.
Yeah. Carrie, Carrie.
House Bill 19, Urban Renewal?
Yes.
With council oversight before incurring debt? So you two oppose that?
Yes. Actually, right now, urban renewal needs to be separate from the city so that we are not liable for their debt, and if council were to approve their debt, that would, that would create a possibility where the council would then put the city in a situation where they're liable for the debt that urban renewal is incurring. Don't know if you would agree with that or not.
I think that's a possibility, by, in a sense, co-mingling and allowing the city to have the oversight and authorizing the debt. The argument could be made that the city incurred the debt, which urban renewal districts can and cities can't, as you all know. I mean, it's constitutionally forbade for cities to incur debt without going to a vote, so.
Thank you.
I assume a similar logic on the eminent domain bill. Part of, part of the problem with removing the power of eminent domain from the urban renewal districts is it has the high likelihood, I would say the probability, of alleviating their ability to secure bonding, because that's one of the requirements, that they have to have that power for them to be allowed to bond, because they-
For tax-exempt bonds.
For tax-exempt bonds.
Right, so they would lose their, potentially lose their tax-exempt authority on bonds.
You know, Alan, real quick, what may make sense, and I don't know, we get the emails in here, and when I respond and/or Shelley responds, I respond as mayor. I don't respond necessarily speaking for you folks, so if you take a different position, you could also respond to the contrary, so I'm not here to speak on your behalf. But the question I have is, we get the emails from the state, and I thought they were going out to mayor and council, and if not, we need-
That's what I thought, too. I guess I'm hearing here that you guys are not receiving these.
Sorry, then we will need to get those to you, so thanks for bringing it up, and we will do it, because we get an update from the Association of Idaho Cities, the legislation that is pending, their position and why, and there's good justification, so we will forward that on. I'm sorry, I thought it was going to all of us.
So did I, yes.
Alan.
I do have a question regarding the eminent domain. It was my understanding that the bill was somewhat limited, saying that we couldn't use, or the URD couldn't use eminent domain to secure property for a small subset of uses. Is that not correct?
I believe that's a separate bill. That was for pedestrian and bicycle facilities, and so that's, that one was Senate Bill 1040 for-
That's a separate one?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I appreciate your clarification on when you two are responding. It might be helpful, just because I don't know that people do make that distinction out in the public. It might be helpful if you let us know when you have responded.
Well, that's what I-
I think there is a kind of a perception that you would be, you know, you're the mayor, that you would be responding for-
Well, and I guess that goes with anybody that would, you know, make comments, et cetera. It's, if you make a comment as a representative of the city, you know, I sign it as mayor, but I speak for myself, and anybody that's going to post or publish anything, you know, there could be a disclaimer issued, and I think we all need to be aware of that. But I think it goes back to what Mr. Malloy, what I just asked Mr. Malloy is, we, I was under the impression that everybody was getting the emails, and I apologize if you weren't, but we will make sure that those are forwarded on to council, because it's very good information there and I think answers a lot of questions. And again, if they ask me to respond, I'm going to respond, I'm going to sign mayor, but I'm not signing representing everybody in the City of Post Falls.
As I say, and you can see here, I have five pages of bills. AIC does not ask us to respond on every bill that's being introduced, so it's only just on a handful of bills.
Yeah. So we will get those emails forwarded on. We'll make sure the ones that we have received over the last week are still forwarded on, if you could do that, too.
Yes, I've forwarded on the one that I had actually sent out, so I, you guys should have received that. I'm seeing blank stares, so I will resend it.
I even dug back my emails before I opened my Yopper.
Just to make sure I wasn't missing anything.
So that's it for staff reports?
That's it for staff reports.
Thank you. Mayor comments? I want to congratulate the Post Falls High School Wrestling Team for their first state championship in Trojan history. Congratulations. I also want to thank the PD, Fire Department, and everybody who facilitated the Welcome Home Parade. I know how important those are, because in the Dark Ages, I was part of one. I mean, in the Dark Ages, I don't even know if they had automobiles at the time. But I heard compliments, I was in a dental office yesterday, and heard compliments for both the PD and the Fire Department, and the city as a whole, and the lady was telling me a similar occurrence when her son returned from Iraq, and how they drove in at 2:30 in the morning or whatever, and they had the overpasses lined with emergency vehicles and people saluting the returning military men and women. So, again, that's, that's part of Post Falls, and I thank you guys for what you and your departments do. I congratulate the wrestling team for a great state championship, and I wish the boys' basketball team best of luck as they head down, and wouldn't it be wonderful to bring home two, two big trophies in, just over a week? So again, congratulations and best of wishes to them. Counsel comments?
I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Dave Fair. He has put in several hours with myself, Gary Schneidmiller, and Fred Osgrimm on the Gladys Schneidmiller Fountain that's going to be built at the cemetery, and he's just done a really outstanding job and helped us a lot, so I just really appreciate that, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. Carrie?
And Gladys Schneidmiller is turning 97 years old this week.
March 6.
Next week.
On Friday.
March 6.
Friday, so happy birthday, Gladys.
This week.
March 6.
But I want to tag along on your homecoming parade. The PD always does such a great job on those on short notice, and a lot of those officers, it's their day off, so they're showing up as volunteers, and one of the officers, School Resource Officer Neil Urrig, was there on his day off in uniform coordinating the parade, but I found out that day, that Monday was his last day as School Resource Officer after six years, and he has just done such a fantastic job. See him at all the games, kids love him. He'll be a detective, or he is a detective, but so he's just on a new assignment, and the new School Resource Officer will be Brett Chapman, who I think will be fabulous up there, so, yeah. But so, thank you very much.
Love Brett.
It's always a proud moment in the community and the Fire Department. Ladder truck, what's not to love about that? But there were a couple hundred people at the high school on Sunday afternoon on short notice, so yay, Post Falls.
I just see Allison walk back in. Allison, I forgot to announce, the fundraiser, March 21st, at the Greyhound Events Center, and it is, the official name is-
Gold Rush?
Gold Rush to benefit the Post Falls Senior Center. So again, I apologize for not mentioning that earlier, so, thank you.
I think Mr. Wolf also, did you have a comment?
No, I'm good. He's just back from vacation. He's good.
Look at him, he's just like laid back.
With that, we do need executive session, a short one.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 67-23451F, and further, oh, further that no action will be taken in the session, and the session will last approximately 10 minutes.
Motion second. Further discussion? Please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, will adjourn to executive session.